One nation under God is invincible for liberty and justice for all.
Great, okay, so as we are getting started with our formal meeting, I just want to run through a couple of quick items, which is number one, if you parked in the library parking garage, we can get you a pass for that. We have staff members around, Cindy Lou is over there, and if you need any parking validation, then we are happy to provide that for you. The other thing, and I trust that none of you will do this, but please do not stand on the chairs or touch our wonderful painting back there. This is a historic room, and we like to keep it as preserved as possible. Let's see, oh, please be respectful of everyone that comes to our podium. We want everybody to feel comfortable in being able to say whatever it is that they would like to say. This is a public meeting, and we encourage people to share their thoughts and their voice with us, but we do want to be respectful of everyone, so no cheering or jeering. If you have any signs of any sort, please do not block the view of people behind you, and if you want to pass anything out or hand us anything, we have staff members throughout the room that can bring that up. Please don't approach the dais itself. I don't think I'm missing anything there. If I am, somebody will fix it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the limited formal meeting minutes of Tuesday, February 12th, 2019.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Luke, a second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion? In that case, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. That will bring us to a five, and I would like to turn the time over to our newest council member, which, welcome to your first formal meeting, Anna. And second formal meeting, we did have, now you're really in the thick of it, you're in the business. So I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you so much, respected council and residents of District Four. I'm honored to have been appointed to represent District Four, my home for over eighteen years. Anna, I truly appreciate and thank all of you, the opportunity given to me a few weeks ago to join you here today. First and foremost, I would like to thank those close friends, family, and mentors that have always been there for me, and that's been throughout the years, rooting for me and making me feel that I can do anything in this world. Thank you. Next, I would like to express my appreciation to all of those that reached out to me after my appointment through messages, comments, words of encouragement, social media. I'm really, truly humbled by the support I've received. I wasn't expecting that, so thank you, if you're listening. Finally, I've been truly blessed with an amazing husband. You've seen him today and throughout these weeks. Really, he happens to be my best friend and my closest mentor and the loudest supporter out there, and also the best partner I could have asked for, so thank you and love you again. District Four is in the heart of our capital city, and it's very dynamic, diverse, and ever-changing. As you may know, I find myself inspired by the work already accomplished by your city leaders and its dedicated employees, like I said about a few weeks ago. I'm ready to continue the work this year, you know, focusing on the upcoming budget season, economic development opportunities, transportation changes, and all that lights ahead for us. In me, you will find a representative that will look at items from various perspectives, as a city planner, as a woman business owner, and as a resident with a Hispanic background. You will find a representative that analyzes issues with a balanced, fair, and reasonable perspective in mind. That's, I hope that's what I portray when I do that, so that the outcome, you know, is always in favor of the majority of the district and for the greater good. In me, you'll find a representative that will take a harder look at economic development opportunities and issues that can benefit those looking to start businesses, those that are already in business, and those looking to invest in our city. I'll be in the lookout for additional opportunities to make sure that affordable housing policies are actually affordable and fair for all the residents across the board, especially those in the middle-income brackets that work and live in the city. I feel like we need to work harder to ensure that our residents are not outpriced from our city. I'm looking forward to continued support of the new resource centers as they open later this year, as experts will continue doing a magnificent job supporting those less fortunate. I will encourage additional support in their efforts with different work programs that will continue to bring dignity to those having cotton body economic circumstances. I will continue to support our economic development department in their efforts to small businesses and startups that need the necessary boost that a city can provide with different economic development programs, and match them with sustainable practices as innovative ideas and efforts spanning the private sector to their part, you know, to be better stewards of our environment and change behaviors. I will support programs that will help us with our quality issues, with innovative ideas, and anything that will help our community do everything we can to clear our air. I'm excited to become a part of a council who will be embracing and leveraging our city's diversity and bringing an additional voice to the conversation on policies that affect all of our city residents. As a diverse council, we're now showing all of our constituents that their voices are represented, issues are heard, and that we can review ordinances and budgets with a lens of a very diverse group. We're showing the next generation that they're just qualified to be sitting on these seats, that they can participate in this important civic service for better outcomes if we're all sitting at the same table. Looking forward to working with all of you council members, and have a hopeful outlook, because we're working together towards a brighter future for our city and all of its residents. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Luke.
One personal privilege, I would ask that we temporarily lift the standards of conduct so that we can give applause to Councilmember Adam Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. And before we begin the public hearing section of our agenda, I reluctantly, not because it's Mr. Luke, but because of what he's going to do, I reluctantly turn the time over to Council Chair Luke for a special recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Margaret Plain has been our Salt Lake City Attorney for twelve years now, and has been a phenomenal person to work with during the entire, you know, time that I've been on the, the nearly eight years that I've served on the council. Margaret has been a crucial part of the city for those ten years where we've seen not just her professionalism, but the way that she has led the office of the city attorney. Her staff that she works with are phenomenal as well, and a lot, you know, I credit this to your leadership, to your ability not only to represent the city as your client, but to represent all of us, your staff included. You have a very tough job as the city attorney, because while you are a member of the mayor's cabinet, you have to represent both branches of government equally. That is something that isn't always easy. You know, I know that there have been differences between, you know, administrations and councils. You have done an amazing job leading both entities through that, providing critical and important advice to both branches equally, and that is something that I know can't be easy, but you made it look easy. You give us, you know, as a council member, you know, you give us the confidence to do our jobs right. You keep us out of trouble, you save us from ourselves, and, you know, for that, you know, again, you're representing a branch of government, but you're representing seven duly-elected officials who have, you know, very definite ideas of what we want to do and how we want to do it, and you help guide us in a way that you're not stepping on our toes, you're not, you know, taking anything away, you're just helping us to achieve what we want to achieve in the best way possible. And, you know, the one, the one thing that is positive, I guess, about this is that you're not going far, so I hope that, you know, we will, we will see you, you know, in going to Park City, where you will be taking a job, you know, upon the approval of the city, Park City Council. You know, it's going to be great, because you will live closer to home, you're going to be in your community, you'll be able to look after your community the same way that we look after Salt Lake City as our community. We know that you believe that, you know, you count Salt Lake City as your community as well, and we thank you for that, but you are going to be missed, you really will. You do have a great staff, you do have great city attorneys that will also be working with us. We also have utmost confidence in them, but it truly has been a pleasure to work with you, so thank you for that. We want to present you with a gift that you can take. It's artwork created by Jeff Clay, who's a local artist. This image of the sun beaming through Corona Arch reminds us of the ways that you've been a beacon of transparency at the city. You've illuminated complex subjects for elected officials and the public alike, and this, you know, as you look on this, we hope that you'll fondly remember your time in the twelve years that you've worked with, with the city council in Salt Lake City as well. So Margaret, thank you so much.
So, if you could join us down front and have the council come down as well for a photo.
And two my fellow council members will open it up afterwards. Do you want to wait till we are done? Okay. Before we begin, again, our public hearing, I'm going to open it up for people who want to say something about Margaret Plain. So first, Erin?
I'd like to read the concurrent resolution that we have to the Park City Council asking them not to approve Margaret's appointment. I'll read it into the mic, just kidding, there's no resolution. Congratulations to Park City and to Margaret. In an effort not to weep, I'll just say that the capital city, and being an elected representative in the capital city, the, I think the greatest honor is the people that you get to know, and Margaret epitomizes that greatness. And as the capital city, we have been in the strongest possible legal hands, and those are hands that have operated the law in the city on behalf of the city like an amazing surgeon with finesse and wisdom and surety and resolve. And there is no way that anyone, mayor or council, can have a full and complete awareness, I think, of the spectrum of possibilities, legal and otherwise, on very complex matters that we deal with as a capital city, and there's a great deal of trust that we therefore place in the guidance of our city attorney. And I, in my time as chair and as a council member over the last five years, had, have had countless experiences of that exercising that trust in you and the staff that you've built in our city, and I am forever grateful to know you, to have worked with you, and I wish you the best, Margaret. You are the best.
Councilmember Wharton?
May I go next?
But of course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I first met Margaret as a second-year law student and was interning at the ACLU of Utah, and Margaret became a mentor for me from, you know, early on in my legal career for the issues that she advocated for and the way that she advocated for them. She was also a mentor for me in the American Bar Association, where we both served in the ABA House of Delegates, which is the primary policymaking body for attorneys nationwide. And there also, Margaret introduced me to all of the people that I needed to know in the ABA, and was, paid particular attention and concern to the issues that she knew that I care about, and tried to link me up with other people on a national level, and in addition to just helping me understand how that body works. And, you know, lawyers never do anything the easiest, or the most, the easiest way, so that body wasn't always the easiest to understand. Then I had the, I speak from the perspective as a colleague in the legal perfection, profession, that Margaret represents really all of the best aspects of what we aspire to be as attorneys, as advocates, as officers of the court, to have honesty, to have integrity, to be diligent in our work of representing our clients, but to also give back and to truly serve, make sure that the law serves the people. And Margaret's been a model for that. And then finally, having the perspective of being a client of Margaret's, I can say that she has always been the consummate professional. She has an extremely talented and very creative legal mind, and she has the very rare skill of being able to explain very complex legal problems and give advice that is clear and concise and dependable always. And she's able to do all of that while still having an excellent sense of humor, which I think is absolutely necessary in this profession and in the halls of government where we've worked together. So I want to thank you so much, Margaret, and I'm still mad, but I'm hoping that I'll be able to let it go over time. If not, then I'll just be in Park City, causing a lot of problems there. So we can look forward to that. Thank you so much, and we'll miss you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to say anything? Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
I would like to say something, actually. Margaret, the first time I met her, first of all, she had one strike against her, she's an attorney. Second strike, she is an ACLU attorney, and she has completely changed my mind about both of them, and, which is pretty hard to do, completely. You know, Margaret has kept me out of jail. She laughs at my jokes, whether she likes them or not. I don't know if it's because she's trying to be nice, but no joke, there is nobody in the city who I have more respect for than Margaret Plain. She is the epitome of what a public servant is. She is available at all hours, it doesn't matter if it's early in the morning or late at night, and she says, "James, are you up?" And everyone knows I go to bed really early, but she'll have advice whether I want to hear it or not. And it is truly sad for me to see you go and leave the city. You have been, it doesn't matter what the component is, what aspect of the city it is, if you don't know it, you'll tell us, and you'll go back and you'll find the information out, which is really hard for, I think, attorneys to do, because you guys work hard and you're very good in your profession. And she has helped me to be able to work with two city attorneys, not two city attorneys, but two attorneys on the council who I love. So Margaret, I know this is not goodbye, it's just so long for a little bit, right? And I just want you to know how much I appreciate you and all that you have done for me personally, for us as the city council, and especially for the residents in District One.
Did anyone else want to say anything? Okay. Andrew, you're looking at me, yes or no?
I will. I have no history with Margaret whatsoever. I've never met Margaret till I got elected here, and probably she only talks to me because I'm on the council and she's the attorney. I've never spent time outside of here with Margaret at all. Really? I only see Margaret at City Hall, period. And yet, this I know, Margaret is the, I think, yeah, I'm pretty sure about this one, I'm pretty sure she is the best lawyer slash competitive water skier I've ever met. And I only know that because she's open about sharing cool things about herself. But I want to echo what other folks have said on this council. One of the great things about being elected to city council is meeting the staff here at the city. And on a reoccurring basis, I am impressed by the integrity, the intelligence, the moxie, and the dedication of folks. And Margaret is top of that list. I have complete trust in what she tells us, and we have to do that a lot with a lot of people, but I have never doubted, had any reason to doubt Margaret's integrity or her judgment, and her willingness to put herself directly in the line of fire, legally speaking, for all of us. And I respect that deeply. So it is hard to move forward in new directions in our lives. It's harder to be the ones left behind, so thank you for leaving us. But it's wonderful that other people are going to experience that, I hope. And it's a rare gift, so I hope that they appreciate what they're going to get. I hope that you'll continue to stay in touch, and I hope that your staff can carry on your legacy, so thank you.
Anna, did you want to say something?
I just want to say thank you, Margaret. You know, we talked earlier today, so I really can't add, because there's so many good things that have already been said, but as I told you earlier, change sometimes is good, and so I'm excited for you to move on to do, you know, cooler things in other parts of the city and make that impact that you've made to Salt Lake City. So good luck to you, and I hope to see you around.
Thanks, everyone, and now it's my turn. I'm going to try really hard not to cry. I can't make any promises. When I first met Margaret, I was in law school, and I don't even think that Margaret knew who I was. I think I probably just saw her and watched her and said, "That's who I want to be when I grow up. I want to be like her." And that has stayed with me from the very beginning of law school to today, and as I've had an amazing, the amazing opportunity of getting to work with you over this last year, I realized there is no way that I will ever amount to as amazing a friend, a mentor, and an attorney as you are. But if I can strive to be just a tenth of that, then I will be successful and happy. And I cannot begin to tell you how grateful this last year has been that we've been able to work together, and I, I'm not going to, I wish I could say I was happy for you, but I'm not, I mean, just kidding-ish. But also, I echo everything that has been said, you, your legal mind and creativity, your ability to present something that can be so very complex in a way that all of us can understand, and be able to represent both sides of this hallway fairly and unbiased, has been quite an amazing feat, and it's been amazing to watch and to be able to be a part of. And I told the mayor the other day that, as I was meeting with her, that we were, we were losing somebody really, really amazing and talented, and that is going to be hard, but that the people under your tutelage are here and just as amazing, and have shown their own creativity and expertise in all of their areas, and that if we have to lose you, at least we're also in very good hands with the people that you have mentored and picked and been a part of their legal minds and legal growing experience. And so I appreciate all of you sticking around, so don't plan on going anywhere, because it's not going to happen. And I just, I love you to pieces, so thank you for everything. And you would...
So I didn't know you guys were going to do this, so thank you. I can't help but not make an observation, which is, I love tonight, because I feel like this is, you know, kind of a full circle. I think I'm wearing the same outfit I wore for Advice and Consent. I think that's an accident, but I feel like it's totally appropriate. Says something about me that I'm still wearing the same suit six years later. You can set that aside. But also, sort of the circle with you all welcoming the fabulous new council member, and, you know, change is inevitable, and it's constant, and I love sort of that some things are staying the same, but there's also this new, exciting member of your council. I took a ten-month position with Salt Lake City twelve years ago, and I never expected to sort of be teary about leaving twelve years later, but you guys have made this fabulous, and if I've learned one really important thing from the council, it's that writing good legislation is so much harder than what I used to do when I was just picking it apart. And I'm not sure I've risen to that challenge of really helping thread all of those needles. I'm embarrassed to say I have a file in my office called ordinances we need to work on. It's really hard work, and what you all do is amazing, and I've learned so much from all of you, and your strength and your courage and being elected officials and getting the opportunity to help you thread the needles has been just the honor of my life. I'm truly humbled. I also have a fabulous team that also humbles me every day, so thank you.
Okay.
So what do we do with the...
No, no, sorry. All right, thank you to everyone for bearing with us through that, and I'm going to try to get through the rest of this without randomly crying. So, our first, we're moving on to our public hearings. So our first public hearing is the Ordinance Budget Amendment Number Three for fiscal year 2018, 2019. I do not have any cards for this, so I will be looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the council close the public hearing and refer the item to a future date for action.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Luke. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Our second public hearing will include items B2 through B6, which will be heard as one public hearing item. I don't have any cards on this. Is there anyone who wants to speak to those items? In that case, I will be looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move the council close the public hearing and refer items B2 through B6 to a future consent agenda for action.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wharton, a second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. We are then at Section C of our agenda, which is potential action items. Our first item is a resolution funding our future inter-local agreement with Utah Transit Authority.
Madam Chair, I move the council adopt the resolution authorizing approval in our local cooperation agreement between Salt Lake City and Utah Transit Authority, providing for transfer of city funds for implementation of the transit master plan and initial mobilization program.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. We are then at section C of our agenda, which is potential action items. Our first item is a resolution funding our future interlocal agreement with Utah Transit Authority.
Madam Chair, I move the council adopt the resolution authorizing approval in our local cooperation agreement between Salt Lake City and Utah Transit Authority providing for a transfer of city funds for implementation of the transit master plan and initial mobilization.
Second. Wow. I have a motion by Councilmember Rogers, a resounding second by both councilmembers, Luke and Councilmember Mendenhall. And is there any discussion on this?
Amen.
Yes, and then Councilmember Johnston?
I just want to third it.
Okay. We have a third by Councilmember Johnston.
I'd like to note, I also seconded it. Seconded it and just want that noted, thank you.
And Anna wanted to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I recognize that I was not able to be part of the council's earlier discussions on this item, but I'm supportive of this interlocal agreement and what it will do to expand transit in Salt Lake City. And, excuse me, as this moves forward, I was intrigued by that question about metrics and how we will measure success in our pocket. And I would like to ask if transportation could work with the sustainability staff to evaluate what measures could be tracked with our partners, our UTA, so that we see how the new transit lines accomplish some of the city's environmental goals, for air quality, for example. So I wonder if we can quantify how it affects emissions or cuts down individual car trips, et cetera. So I look forward to seeing how this initiative progresses and seeing what works, so we can build on that in the future, in future agreements.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mendenhall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The resounding depth of my joy to second this motion comes from 2014 when I was campaigning for the first time and so desired to support this transit master plan, which was an honor to do, but it's an even greater honor that we have a community that wants to support this with their tax dollars and supported the sales tax and that we were actually funding it and making it happen, so I'm happy to spend the money and thank goodness.
Great. Councilmember Luke?
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this because I had, and it was probably before anybody else was on the, no, no, I think it was before anyone else was on the council. So Luke Garrett and I used to get in debates all the time. Luke wanted to have a secondary, another separate transit system to provide Salt Lake City bus service. I loudly disagreed with him and told him that that wasn't the way that, you know, we should do that. We don't need to duplicate all of those services. What we ought to do is, I said that, you know, the key issue is controlling the money and keeping that and that we could then contract with UTA or any other transit provider to provide that service. So it is very, very rewarding to see that actually come to fruition, that both UTA and Salt Lake City have figured out how to work together to do exactly what many of us over the years have talked about and have understood is necessary to happen. You know, we do need more bus service in the city. We're willing to pay for it. Our residents are willing to pay for it. And this, I think, is a great model that hopefully we can expand as a city and that other cities can look to and that UTA can take to other cities if they are also having transit issues that they would like to expand. So I just want to thank UTA, I want to thank John Larson and your staff for your work with them as well and figuring out how to do this because you had to, I mean, you had to start from scratch, you really did. I mean, this hadn't been done before, so thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, did you want to say something?
Oh, I was just going to say, these west-east connectors are going to be huge. You know, it's going to be an education process too because the west side has been without bus service for so many years, that I'm excited to see how that rolls out and how we educate and get them using the bus service. So I also want to thank council members here for making this investment. I mean, we've been talking about it and heard about it, but this is finally happening, so...
Excellent. Anyone else? I do then just want to take a quick second as well and thank John and the transportation team and UTA. We know, as Charlie pointed out, that this is the first of its kind. It's unique. It's amazing. You guys have worked so hard and I cannot thank you enough. I also want to thank Margaret's team because without her attorneys and the people that were working on this interlocal, we wouldn't be here today. And especially dealing with seven personalities of having a contract and then seeing, but what about this other thing? Right? At like every step of the way. And to then continue working diligently through all of us. And I really cannot thank your team enough, thank you guys enough for really taking in all of those concerns that we did have and tweaking things enough to make something really fabulous that I think is going to be a model for other cities throughout the state to really increase our transportation. So thank you so much for all your hard work. Thank you for listening to our voices and making those different changes that we needed. Thanks, Margaret. So thank your team for us as well. So with that, should we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that motion passes, so congratulations. All right, we are moving on next to the comment section of our agenda. First, we have questions to the mayor. We have David Litback here on behalf of Mayor Biskupski, so thank you, David, for being here. And I believe we have a couple of questions, so if Mr. Luke would like to...
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the second time that we're going to be doing this, so thank you for your willingness to hear that. Couple of new questions this week. First is, will the administration incorporate a practice that all funding requests from the administration include an administrative analysis to include feedback from the city attorney, finance department, and relevant city departments? For any capital funding request through either the general fund or RDA, could the administration incorporate a practice for the city's impact fee consultant to review the item and identify any opportunity for the use of impact fees as a funding resource? And David, I then have, there's, as you'll see from this, there are some related, some related information to that question, so that would be the first one. The second is related to city services on streets near Mill Creek. And the question is, we've received very helpful and quickly, we have received very helpful and quickly gathered information from various city departments about Salt Lake City service levels provided in and around the Brickyard area. For public consumption, it would be helpful if an analyst in the administration could confirm that the information, or confirm that information and bring it into one format and one voice so that it can be used as a central resource to answer inquiries from news media, taxpayers, property owners in and around the area, elected officials from other jurisdictions, et cetera. While the legislation has been put on hold right now as Salt Lake City and Mill Creek further their discussions, I don't want to say begin because we've been talking to them for a long time, but it would be helpful to have that clear and concise information because I think as the discussions progress, more and more people will be interested in seeing that. The third is a question about the public safety pension. We talked about this a little bit during the council work session. As a follow-up to the briefing discussion tonight, it would be helpful to have more information about the cost to the city in year two, three, and beyond if state legislation is implemented. And then a fourth item, which isn't really a question, but you'll see it, there are some pending meetings, we're going to list that as part of these questions as well, just so that, you know, we're being clear from the council side on some of these meetings that we have scheduled with the administration. Following are the questions from the previous meeting. So what we'll do is we'll develop kind of an ongoing list as, you know, we're waiting to hear back on some of these questions.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could, in response to the surveyor error question, we have reached out to the attorney's office and have asked the attorney to take a look at that issue and come back to the administration with information on whether or not there is a legal remedy, and then we will follow up conversation with the council.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, one other thing. So last week, we didn't raise these questions because Mayor Biskupski was here in the formal meeting. I don't know if she had been fully briefed about what we were going to do, and so we didn't want it to look, we didn't want to catch her off guard. But if you could let her know so that if she is here in the future and we go through this, that she's not caught off guard or surprised or feel, you know, attacked. You know, we don't want, that's not the intent of what we're trying to do here. We've just found that there are, you know, a number of ongoing questions that we have that I think if we're able to track and be concise with, it'll help all of us as we move forward. So if you could just let her know, that would be great. Okay, thanks, Madam Chair.
You are welcome, thank you. Okay. Thanks again, David, for being here and for getting us answers to some of these questions. Appreciate it. Next, we are at D2, which is our general comments. I have a couple of comment cards here, so I'll call people that have turned these in. I do want to remind everyone to please be respectful of one another. You will have two minutes to speak. Please be also respectful of our timekeeper. We want everyone to have a chance to speak, but we only have so much time and we talk a lot. So if I could please, I'll have Sam Rubin, and then after Sam Rubin will be Kevin Kellis.
Good evening, council members. Before I begin, I'd like to ask for you to please close your eyes for a moment and picture one of your children, your spouse, your parents, or another member of your family who is a little older and arriving at the Salt Lake City International Airport for the very first time. Since you're so busy with your day-to-day careers in the city council, you cannot pick them up at the airport, so you've decided to use a properly licensed, insured, and permitted ground transportation company to meet your loved one inside the airport as they enter the baggage claim area, helping them with their luggage and walking them to their vehicle so they can take, so you, I'm sorry, so they can take them to your home. However, something has happened. There is no one to meet your loved one in the baggage claim and your loved one is calling you frantically wondering where their driver and their vehicle are. Now open your eyes. The situation I just described would probably be a nightmare for you, and if this actually happened to you, I'm sure you'd both be frustrated and upset. Unfortunately, the scenario of what I just described happens many times, every single day, as a result of the current situation that all ground transportation companies, including mine, have to endure every single day. With that said, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Sam Rubin and I own Four Seasons Concierge. We are the area's highest rated and most reviewed transportation company in the area with over 335-star reviews. We hold long-term contracts for local hotels, companies, and the crew transportation provided for both Alaska Airlines and Delta Airlines, providing over 1,500 trips throughout the airport on a monthly basis. Last year alone, we paid over $55,000 to the Salt Lake City International Airport for our airport vehicle tolls and over $5,000 in additional fees to the airport just for the parking in an airport garage so we could provide a meet and greet service for our clients, which on average results in our vehicle being in the garage for under 30 minutes. Close to two weeks ago, I wrote an email to the council and have attempted to work with Terry Burnett with the Salt Lake City International Airport. To date, I have not received a reply from anyone on the council, any progress from Terry or the airport, anyone from city administration, nor the airport director, Bill Wyatt. As you know, ground transportation providers are often the first person that a visitor to our amazing city encounters. They reaffirm the training videos that all of our chauffeurs are required to watch when they get their airport a badge. The current situation at the Salt Lake City Airport requires immediate attention. With the rebuilding of the airport and lack of anywhere to park and quickly access the terminal for ground transportation companies are now being forced to not only pay our normal airport tolls of $2.46 for most SUVs, but also pay for an airport parking at the garage, anywhere from $2 to $5 when we provide a meet and greet service. Not only does this seem excessive, but it also means that we have to pay double the amount. Ultimately, it is a cost that we have to pass along to our clients, which are already price sensitive due to the low rates that Uber and Lyft charge. More importantly, the parking attendants often will not allow ground transportation vehicles to enter the garage, and therefore we have no way to meet and greet our clients.
Mr. Rubin, you're, I'm sorry, your time is up at this point, so I ask you to, that your time is up, if you could just finish up real quick.
Sure. Basically, I'm asking for your assistance because we are getting absolutely nowhere with the airport. It's causing major issues. If you happen to read the email that I sent on the 12th, I actually had an 85-year-old client that uses a cane that could not lift their bag off the baggage claim, that was literally freaking out because we could not get into the airport. We circled four times and were refused every single time to park in the parking garage. Something needs to change. It's, you know, again, we are the first person that people are encountering and we just can get absolutely nowhere, so I'm asking for your assistance, please.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you.
Mr. Kellis, please.
I think Sam pretty much said it all for both of us.
Okay, great, thank you. I also have a card here from Marlon Bear.
As I mentioned, my name's Marlon Bear. There's a lot of serious issues going on at the airport. I myself had a client today that we were not allowed to pick up that was in a wheelchair. The parking structure would not let us in the parking structure to pick that client up, and that's in violation of the American Disabilities Act, just so you guys know, of which I'm going to make a complaint with the American Disabilities Act on just that alone, where we're denied access to the airport structure. This is an airport badge that we all have to carry. It's a $1,000 fine if we don't have it on our premise. Why is Uber and Lyft being allowed not to have those badges? But if we don't, it's a $1,000 fine. Uber and Lyft are able to go into that airport. You guys have allowed this to come in. The state has now passed rules and regulations allowing them to do this. This is unfair to the businesses that we pay taxes for and we operate legally within the offices of the DOT regulations. The DOT regulations, if some of these things do not change on your behalf, I'm going to start exercising my DOT right and privileges, and that's just to start running through the airport and using my DOT authority, which allows you guys not able to stop us. DOT, which is federal, supersedes all city and local laws, as long as we're abiding by the federal rules. Because we have to play by the rules. Why doesn't Uber and Lyft have to play by those same rules? Sam and I know Kevin all have DOTs, and that's what we're proposing to do if you guys don't start changing, just like the airport fees. I have countless clients that go to the airport and they say this is like this in all of the airports. You don't go to JFK and have to push in a code to put your badge in. There would be all sorts of endless lines trying to get through the airport. If you guys want to be with the big boys and play with the big boys, things need to change, if that makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. I have no other cards. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Okay. In that case, we are moving on in our agenda. We have no new business at this time. We do have some unfinished business. Our first item is ordinance 545 and 555 West, which is an ordinance amending the zoning map pertaining to property located at 555 West, 500 North.
Madam Chair, I move the council adopt the ordinance amending the zoning for the property located at 555 West, 500 North to TSA UCT and SR-3 and rezone the property at 545 West, 500 North to TSA-US-UC-T, subject to the conditions stated in the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rogers, a second by Councilmember Johnston. Is there any discussion on this? In that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Our next item of unfinished business is a grant holding account items associated with budget amendment number four for fiscal year 2018-19. I'll look for a motion on this. I think it's this one.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move the council approve these items with the exception of G5, the UDOT Transportation Alternative Program, or TAP, Bike Share Expansion Grant, which is being pulled and will be discussed further during the March 5th work session.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wharton, a second by Councilmember Johnston. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes as well. We are now at the consent portion of our agenda. I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wharton, a second by Councilmember Johnston. Is there, are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes, and this concludes our formal city council meeting. We're adjourned. I look really good with this gavel.